Okay. You all set, Jim?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. The Newton Planning Board would like to hold a public meeting on Tuesday, May 28, 2024, at the Newton Town Hall, beginning at 7:00 PM. Clock's off a little bit, but first I would like to salute the flag. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the first thing on the agenda tonight is the Sanborn Regional School District requests a public hearing on an amended site plan for 31 West Main Street, New Hampshire. The law is referenced as Tax Map 6, Block 7, Block 4. Do you have any comments about this? It's a little bit different than all of the other places.
It is a little bit different. Under state statutes, when municipalities or school districts are proposing to do work on their property, they are typically not subject to local regulations like zoning and site plan and subdivision. I'm sure that the folks here are going to speak to what they're proposing to do, but based on the information that was submitted, I did not have a lot of information as to the full use of the property. I fully understand it is owned by the school district. So I did have some questions about what the nature of the governmental use is. I think everyone got the email that contained the state statute. So effectively, I was looking for some more information from the school district to just ensure I know which rules they should be following so I can advise you. Under the same statute, the planning board is advisory in nature if this goes as a governmental use, so you can have a public hearing. It was noticed as a public hearing, but you don't have to explicitly take public comment. And anything you say, if it's a governmental use, is advisory only. I have a couple of specifics when we get into discussing the actual proposal that I would like to ask a few questions, but that's the basic aspect that makes this a little different than your typical application.
Okay, so we don't have to take jurisdiction?
No.
The floor is yours.
I think it's Dan O'Connell, Representative Sanborn Regional School District. I did decide to develop plans to, Jim, to pass on to you guys for review. Dan, comments?
So you're here for an amended site plan for what reason?
For adding parking and a turnaround area in front of a new public charter school that is going to be leasing our space.
Okay, so there's... I guess we would probably need more comment or more information to provide comments or any feedback whatsoever.
Yes, with the expansion of the school, obviously, they're going to have their own staff and we need parking for the public. Right now, parking is an issue there. Seacoast Learning Collaborative is also leasing a portion of the building right now. No connection to Seacoast Classical Academy, but they are at their maximum fill at the parking lot there. So because of that, we have to generate more parking for teachers, staff, and visitors when they attend the Seacoast Classical Academy. So we met with some engineers and to best obtain the parking requirements for the Seacoast Classical Academy, this is a plan that we've developed in partnership with them. The reason why we're trying to increase this in front of the entrance of the new academy is so we don't have to basically remove a baseball field that we have there now. We're trying to save the baseball field, but we have to add parking there. So this is one way of getting at the parking issue that's going to take place there.
Okay. Jim?
So I think some of my specifics as to what they are proposing is, you're proposing 15 parking spots?
Oh, no, no, much more than that. If you look at page C3, we are adding parking parallel to the ball field, actually perpendicular to the ball field, starting at the entrance. You could see the dark line where we're adding close to, I believe, 45 parking spots. So we're deepening the parking lot a little bit by about eight feet so cars can pull in instead of parallel park along the ball field. And then we're placing additional spots where the existing garages to the right and across, and then additional spots within the turnaround area in front of the Seacoast Classical Academy.
Sorry, I misspoke. What I was saying 15 is really in that circle area that you were proposing. That's where that number in my head was sticking out. But yes, you are proposing the additional parking.
Yes, yes.
Do you have a count of the number of stalls?
The number of spots? Let's see, not including handicapped. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18. 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45.
Okay, thank you.
So just, you okay with me? Based on the turnaround, this is sort of what regulations do they need to follow or not? The turnaround is put into the wetland setback on this proposal. Now, if they don't have to follow the local regulations, that's fine. They don't need to get any sort of relief from the zoning board. But one of the aspects with this proposal being in the wetland setback and just the additional impervious surface, this is subject to this town's MS4 stormwater permit. It's a federal permit. This is subject to it because it's municipally owned. Because of that, any stormwater generated, you do have to follow the guides of that permit, which are basically your stormwater management guidelines you have in your site plan and subdivision regulations in order to be in compliance with that permit, which does make this more complicated as far as what information at least I would recommend the board ask for the school to provide if they're going to go forward with this. The planning board is advisory in nature in this, but I would strongly recommend giving that as a recommendation.
Thank you. And as of right now, for the additional 18, 5, 5, 28 spots on the north side, there's no stormwater treatment provided in the design, or very little, or I can't see any. It seems like there's generally a lack of stormwater treatment on the design, and I understand that they don't have to follow it, but there's a grass line swell that provides some treatment. And so there is no question about the use of the facility because it is basically mixed use, and I guess if we had to play this by the book, these parking stalls would have to be designated specifically for that use.
So given what was presented from the school in response to my email raising the use concern, I do think that you're all right as far as considering this governmental use. I would just have it be part of the record-
Okay.
-that the planning board considered it and found it to be governmental use.
That was basically the reason why I was making that statement. I guess I also... Does anybody else have any questions on this?
I do.
Sure, Barbara.
Dennis?
Yep.
Yeah. I just wanted to know, are they going to be cutting down the trees? Can you, can they tell us how far away that is from the Butters property and will there still be a vegetated barrier left between the school property and the Butters?
Yes, absolutely. We're leaving all mature trees in place. The only thing we're taking down are little scrub trees, a couple inches or smaller. So my goal here is not to take down any of the old growth trees. I want to keep those in place.
Okay.
That's why the parking is kind of choppy along the way.
On the plans that you have provided, it is like very difficult. Actually, I can't tell at all where the wetlands are even, so I'm just letting you know that.
Official statement for the record?
I'm sorry?
Is that your official statement for the record?
As far as leaving mature trees?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Is there any code about handicap parking that's required towards the front of that building also that needs to be marked? Because I'm not seeing it.
If you look on C3, they have indicated where the handicap parking would be placed.
And that's adequate, though?
Given the whole, I don't have a parking designation for the entire site. It'd be based on the building size, so I can't directly answer your question.
Obviously, we paid SFC Engineering to engineer this lot, so they kept that in mind, the handicap issues, so it should be adequate.
Just for board members, on sheet C2, you can actually see the wetland delineation a little bit clearer than on sheet C3.
I just find it very hard that there's going to be a swell installed in an 8-inch pine tree, an 8-inch oak tree, or 18-inch pine tree, 18-inch oak tree. I personally would consider those mature.
Well, I kind of agree with you. Disturbing that soil, I think, would be a no-no. I mean, it's, obviously, we want to put silt socks and everything in place to keep the runoff going into the wetlands area. But we're going to try our hardest not to disturb that soil. I think the soil that's there now is deeply rooted with plants and trees and everything, and I, to me, the more you disturb the soil, the more problems you're going to ask for.
I totally understand that. I'm just, that's not but the drawing show.
I understand.
They're calling for the soils to be disturbed.
I know. We'll do it, but I don't agree with it. That's what the engineers say, that's what we'll do. Now, if you're happy with just putting some silt fencing or silt socks down in place of digging and putting a swell, I'm more than happy to do that, which I think would probably be more effective than actually digging and disturbing the soil.
So I think you need to tell us what you're doing.
I would prefer to put silt sock in place and some silt fencing along that water edge there rather than disturbing the soil.
And provide no stormwater treatment.
I'm sorry?
And provide no stormwater treatment. That is the district's goal.
Yeah, I think it would be beneficial to the wetlands area if we did not disturb the soil.
So I think we're talking about two different things. Active construction, silt fencing, silt socks-
Right.
-can be very useful tools used all the time.
Right.
I think what we're talking about, what you proposed is the, after you've constructed, how is that stormwater being treated that's being generated?
Well, there would be no culverts or anything like that if that's what you're asking, like concrete or anything like that. There's no treatment of any water on that property as it stands now.
That's exactly accurate concern, and the additional impervious area, from the town's perspective, from MS4 compliance, would require that or benefit from that.
Right.
And you're proposing a grass swell, which is a BMP, a typical stormwater practice, and then the statement was made that no mature trees are being removed as part of this project, but there's clearing for the four, five, six stalls and the turnaround within, like there's direct impacts to the wetland buffer, which kind of goes against everything in the town. My recommendation probably will be is like to limit wetland buffer impacts to the extent practicable, but you're going back and forth and telling me like, there's no tree removal, but there's treatment removal, there's no stormwater treatment, there's stormwater treatment. And I guess we're trying to find out what is being proposed. According to the drawings-
Correct.
-that I'm looking at, there's a grass line swell that's going through fairly large trees. Not at the capacity to determine whether or not they're mature, but based on the survey, they're 18-inch trees. And the statement was made that there's no trees being, mature trees being removed. So I guess we can't make a determination or provide, can't opine on the drawing set or the application either way.
I guess at this point, since you're advisory, I would like to just put some silt fencing and sock in instead of digging and disturbing the root on those trees, because my chances are of killing those trees are pretty high once we start excavating in that area. And then we're, you know, and then we have issues there then. That's what I would propose that the school district do. Put in silt systems there along that area instead of digging into the ground.
Can we, do we need a set of revised drawings or does it not at this point? It's moot.
It is moot. If you don't feel like you can make an advisory opinion because you don't have all the information you need, you could certainly ask them to provide some more information. Again, your advisory, the school does not have to do that.
Okay. And we can't require anything either? Okay. Is what it is then. Does anybody else have any other comments?
What do they plan on doing around that concrete fuel tank?
That'll be a grass area in the center.
And just, I'm sure the SFC will comment on this when it gets into construction. The force main, that is, the elevation's unknown. My recommendation would be to protect that or relocate it so it's not crushed.
Protect and relocate, wait, I'm sorry, I can't hear.
The force main in the area. The drawings say the elevation is unknown or the location elevation, just so it's not crushed. That's on sheet C2, I believe. Or maybe it was on C3. I think they pointed out on there, yeah, septic line location unknown, C note.
Why, I sued you, yes.
It's just that you're going to be directly driving on top of it. I'm sure it's probably covered from frost, but I don't think anybody knows other than it's on there.
There's a lot of unknown on that property, believe me. I mean, one of the things we could do is if impervious services is an issue, I mean, we could remove the first two parking spots that are parallel in the loop closest to the building there to help with that situation a little bit, if you're agreeable to that.
You're talking, the parallel spots around the turnaround, the bus or whatever it's been? I think that would be in the intent of the town's wetland protection or wetland ordinance as a bylaw overlay.
Yeah, I mean, minimizing impervious surface in the wetlands buffer is always part of the regulation. I will say with those two spots specifically, I did have a question about whether those were impacting a fire lane.
Well, technically, there is not a fire lane around that school.
I would just recommend that you get feedback from the fire chief about having those parking spots there in the event that someone needed to access the back of that school. I understand it's not like-
That's one thing I could do is remove those two that are in question there that kind of have access to the fire lane, plus it reduces the impervious surfaces there.
I think so.
If you're agreed to that.
I guess we-
I mean, it's not a fire, we just called it an access road, you know, to be a fire lane.
These two over here.
True, I mean, the access to that part of the building.
Which ones?
So it's these two.
Further down.
Yeah, it's sheet flow. The entire site is sheet flow. There's not enough spot grades for me to tell.
So everything new, everything that they're doing is all just going to sheet off onto the grass area?
The parking lot to the north sheets in, maybe? I don't know. Everything else sheets towards the wetland area then down the swell.
Guess what? Thinking what he's just saying, that swell, it's pretty much not going to do it.
The engineered swell?
Yeah.
I don't think it will, quite honestly, and like I said.
So the swell is intended to slow down the water and let any solid, suspended solid, let it settle out before it enters the wetland. That's the reason why it's considered stormwater treatment. It is making the water not pristine, but it is making it better coming off of the pavement.
Right, except it's just in that, is that 100 feet?
123 feet.
It obviously has to be sloped appropriate.
123-foot area, right?
Yes.
Which are going to destroy everything that's there in order to create it, remove trees.
That's what my issue is. In order to create it, we're going to be moving trees, and I don't know if that is the right thing we want to do. I think the vegetation's our best friend there, quite honestly.
I mean, the best thing would be to not disturb the wetland buffer, to be honest. I understand you have goals that you are trying to meet, but that would be for water quality protection. The best thing to be doing is to keeping it as minimal as possible in that buffer area.
Like I said, I'll put silt socks and all that all down in that area there to slow it down even more, to keep some of the heavier solids from floating into the wetland area. And that's something we can maintain indefinitely, you know? Those socks will last five, six years. Once they deteriorate, we can put another row sock in.
Does anybody else have any comments? I mean, I guess my overall thought is to, to the extent practicable, limit or reduce, remove impacts to the wetland buffer. And, you know, if you can live without the five parallel stalls and move that swell interior, that would, from speaking on behalf of the Concom, probably provide the best option. I know we're killing five stalls, but you probably need every parking space you can get.
Problem is, is if we remove those spots, moving that swell forward now is in the tree line of the existing trees. So if you look at how the parallel spots are kind of diced up, those are trees in those little areas. Those are full-grown trees. If we remove those spots and you move the swell forward, now I have to take down full-grown trees.
So there's no full-grown trees in that other section?
Well, there are, but I was, you know, going to snake it through the trees there the best we could. That's the thing. If we put the swell in like they're proposing, then I'm going to have to take down some trees, and I really, really don't want to do that.
So if we have to, if you have to widen that for a fire lane, that's going to impact everything.
Well, there will never be a fire lane there, first of all, because in order for a fire lane, it has to be so wide so it's passable. There's just not enough room back there to do a fire lane, period. There's no way of even getting around the opposite side of the building. There's no way you could get a truck around there. So it's a gravel road, it's an access road, it's just large enough for a patrol car to go through, but there is no way you would get heavy-
Yeah, I was just referring to this section right here.
Well, even if we put in an official fire lane, there's still no room there. That's why we don't use that word "fire lane." It's an access road.
I guess I personally have no further comments on this, given the fact that we can't make many recommendations other than my personal opinion. Can I speak on behalf of the board? My opinion as a board member is to minimize impacts of the wetland buffer to the extent practicable and leave it at that.
So just, the board can vote to recommend the project or to recommend it with conditions like, you know, minimize the impact? You can do that. It's an advisory vote, but it can be an official advisory vote.
Yeah, I definitely agree that as much as it would be sad if those 18-inch long trees were more likely to rerow trees than to cover that wetland. So we have a wrong, not deserving wetlands much possible on those trees for that type of time, so.
It's a valid argument. I like it. Does anybody else have anything? I'm indifferent either way if we want to go down it or not.
I would at least recommend that you have a basic, we recommend what's being proposed or we recommend some conditions, or we don't recommend it if that may be the case.
I mean, I definitely think I'd recommend it with conditions. If it's what the school needs, then I think it's something that needs to be done just with those conditions of trying to minimize that effect of the wetland.
Is this the plan moving forward or is there going to be revisions to it?
Well, that's what I was going to say, because it's definitely going to have to, these are going to have to be revised because you're going to, if you're going to, excuse me, use the socks and all that, those are going to have to be shown in here. There's going to have to be the stipulation that the school will assume responsibility for replacing those every period of time to make sure that they're kept up to par so that they're doing what they should be doing. So that would be a requirement that would have to be put on there, right?
So Bob, just, there won't be requirements. There is not enforcement that the town is going to be able to do on this. That's why I said the word-
Right, but I'm suggesting that that be put on the papers, right?
You could, I would just maybe have it be part of, if you're going to do a recommendation vote, have it be a condition that the school will simply provide the update as to how the maintenance of that stormwater is going to be dealt with and provide the detail. You actually need that for your MS4 permit.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
So the silt fence or siltation fence is shown on the drawings. It's at the, where you would expect it to be, on the most downhill side of the living of work, but, and we cannot require if the drawings are updated to have the new submitted set?
I will say for compliance with the MS4 permit, you actually do need to have as-built of all of the stormwater treatments. So if there is a swell constructed, it would be beneficial to the town for the school to provide the as-built of that stormwater infrastructure.
And does that include a stormwater maintenance program as well?
Yep.
Okay, so we can require that? Perfect.
And I say recommend, not require, right?
Oh, we can recommend it. We can't require it.
Right, US Planning Board can't require it, no.
Can the Board of Selectmen require it because it's, or is it, no, it's owned by the, it's owned by the school.
Because the Select Board is the jurisdiction for the MS4 permit, then they can require the school.
Okay.
The Planning Board can't require the school to do this.
That's fine. I'm just trying to get ahead of that, just so they're all aware that as part of their agreement with the community, I have no idea how it works, nor do I, I guess, really care. The town will need that eventually.
Yes. When, after it's constructed, the town should request it.
Okay. Request, not require. Okay.
And my only other concern, like I said earlier, is I see the two handicap spots, but I would just like to have that, I would suggest that we double-check to make sure that that's adequate enough and it meets the code-
Will do.
-per building, for as many spots and people that you're going to have associated with that building.
We'll double-check with the engineers.
All right.
I would highly suggest you double-check it. The width does not meet van requirements.
Two spots.
It does for a car. You're short on the van stall width. Thanks for that, Bob. That'll come back and get everybody at the end of the day.
Yep.
I don't have anything else. Do we wanna vote on that? No, recommend?
I don't vote, so that's up to you guys.
It's up to you guys.
Sure, yeah.
Somebody, Bob, can you articulate a recommended-
My, my only other concern was, so that concrete fuel tank that's above ground?
It's below ground.
It is below ground?
Is that used for heating fuel? I'm just curious.
I'm sorry?
Is it heating fuel?
Yes.
Do you guys still use it?
In the future, I hope not to. That's for bigger, better days.
You have deep thoughts about that, the fuel tank?
Well, my, it just, if there's anything that's coming up out of that, fuel tank sticking above ground was my concern, that we might want to suggest that there's some type of barriers that are put up in place in case, God forbid, as we all see on the news, these people that drive through stores and whatever, that could end up going over an embankment that they don't take out.
Everything there is subsurface except for the vent pipe.
Okay. So we might wanna just make sure that that's protected.
Do you recommend like a Jersey barrier or bollard or something?
Something, yeah, bollard around it. You know what I mean?
Yeah, it, it'll be difficult because the vent is actually through a manhole cover, and if I put a bollard there, then I can't get into the manhole.
Okay.
Because I've actually thought about that a couple times, protecting that, but it'd be very difficult. But we can be creative. We'll figure out something to protect it.
Well, I haven't seen it visually, so that's why I'm asking about it, because like I said, these-
Be creative and put a, possibly maybe a concrete park bench or something there in the future to kind of protect it.
Only because these days, there's a lot of grandparents that pick up their kids from school, and those are the, mostly the people that we seem to see on the news, that their cars accelerate all of a sudden out of control and-
I think people are taking offense to that.
Yeah, so I just, I just, I had to be on the cautious side.
Sure, I understand.
It's fairly visible, Bob. Okay.
They do have, it's been a long time, few years now, but the project really had to have removable bollards. They have details for removable bollards there. It's actually fully designed on concrete slab, and they get bolted in, so if you ever have to get to them, they're unbolted and they withstand the tolerance. They meet the same standards as-
Right. Yeah, I just had bollards installed at the high school and at Memorial School, and, and a number of them are removable for access, so. Right. Yeah, like I said, it'd be hard to do something close to the vent pipe because it's above the tank, so if you drill through the slab, now you're drilling into the top of the tank.
Right.
So it's kind of a weird situation, but like I said, we could be creative and, and figure out something to protect it a bit more.
So Raina wants to vote on recommendations?
Yeah.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
If we advise to save the wetland area, how many trees are gonna be cut down to do that?
How many have been so far?
How many will be if we, if you follow that recommendation?
I'd have to go down there and get a count, but I would say probably half, half dozen trees, simply because you gotta get your equipment in there to do it also.
Thank you.
Has the town fire chief looked at this at all?
Uh, no, not that I've heard.
Or been told anything about it?
No, other than when we gave this to SFC Engineering, their fire division looked at this to make sure that the turnaround area was wide enough to handle a truck-
Okay.
And that, that the gravel underneath would hold the, the vehicle weight also. So in our original plans, we had it actually a little bit narrower as far as a rough drawing goes, and we sent this out to SFC, and they actually widened it for the purpose.
Okay. That was my only last concern.
Jim?
Our fire chief did ask about the access behind the building. And my response to him was he would have to speak to Mr. Doyle. That was the last I heard.
So they did test pits since the fourteenth?
Have they done test pits? The only testing they did back there was during the, right at the wetland area?
Okay. For the wetland delineation?
I'm sorry?
For the wetland delineation?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we paid extra for a wetland engineer to come in and actually do some ground testing and stuff out there to figure out what was actually wetland and what wasn't.
BSC flagged it. I have no other comments.
So what would be the stipulations?
Do you want me to list what I have?
Yeah, that was finally collected. The parking, we have parking.
So that recommendations would be that the school minimize disturbance in the wetland buffer to the extent practical, that once constructed, that there be as-built of the stormwater structures, and an operation and maintenance plan submitted to the town, and that the ADA parking spaces be reviewed to ensure that they meet code for the building size and use.
Do we want to get, make sure that we, it has the approval of the fire chief, or no?
I don't think it's necessary.
Do we want to get, like, the wetland scientist stamp on the final drawings?
I don't think that's necessary, to be honest. I think it's just an extra expense. Want to articulate that, Bob?
No, I think we're good.
What she said.
Yep.
Do you want me to read it again?
This is a little different from yours, but-
Do you want me to read what I had again?
You wanna hear it again?
Yep.
Okay. That the, it would basically be the board would recommend that the school minimize disturbance to the wetland buffer to the practical extent possible, that an as-built of any stormwater structure and an operation and maintenance plan be submitted to the town, and that the ADA parking spaces be reviewed to ensure that they comply with the building size and are adequately, sorry, and are adequately sized for the use.
Can I add one more?
You absolutely can, so you're both-
That the engineer of record is, how do I wanna put this? That the notes on the drawings that are submitted to the planning board are followed during construction. That's not what I wanted to say, but I think there's really good notes on the drawings, and I think it would be, it's important that the engineer of record be involved during construction. But how do I wanna say that? That during construction, that the notes and recommendations provided on the drawings that are followed through with. There's actually-
Good with that?
Decent amount of impervious area. I didn't actually look at it. It's eleven thousand square feet, quarter acre.
So as an advisory board, I will make the motion-
One second. So we didn't, we're gonna take out the protection of the fuel tank vent pipe, right?
Yeah, we didn't put it in.
Yeah, that's not on my list. You can have it if you want it.
Wanna make sure we got it written down? Okay, go ahead.
So from an advisory standpoint, I will make the motion that those suggestions that Jen put forth of what we suggest to the school board be addressed.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Did you get that, Jim? Raina seconded it?
Yeah, I got that. However, I had one that wasn't on the Jones list, and that the school districts apply documents as to their compliance with Newton's MS4 permit.
That would be covered with the as-built and the operation and maintenance plan comment.
Right.
So I guess this is her.
You ready for the vote?
Yeah.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Ms. Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Papa Christus?
Aye.
And Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Yeah, I'll say.
Okay, just get those requests to me and writing or email, and we'll make sure we follow through with you.
Yeah, I would just, to sort of button up loose ends, that a notice of decision effectively, what you just voted on-
Right.
-be written up, just so the school district has it, the planning board has it. It'll be in one piece of paper.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle.
Thank you.
Thank you for being so patient.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I mean, you know, I know that we, me and government, we don't have to follow this, but I wanna be transparent with the town, and I wanna be transparent with the voters, what's going on.
We appreciate that. Have a good night.
Have a good evening.
Take care.
Okay, next is just the board business. So we have acceptance of the meeting minutes from May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddie?
Aye.
Ms., Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Ms. Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Papa Christus?
Aye.
And Mr. Moran?
Aye. There is no NEPRA manifest tonight, so we're gonna kill that.
Everything I had turned out to be CBA.
And then next, we got Jen's housing chapter review, and we got a pretty packet printed.
Yes, so this is what I had gone through with you guys at the meeting two weeks ago. I apologize, I couldn't have been here to give you the physical copy, but I think everybody got it. So the intent of tonight, or the hope is that if we have any changes we wanna make, any questions, I'm happy to answer that. If you want me to go through it again, I will do that. But the intent was to possibly have this get moved to public hearing for the June eleventh meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the public hearing, right?
Yep, but you'd have to vote to move it to public hearing.
Can somebody make a motion to-
I will make a motion to have a public hearing on June eleventh.
Seconded.
For the purpose of the twenty twenty-four housing master plan chapter.
And that will be posted for seven o'clock.
If, I know you have some other cases for that evening that shouldn't be particularly long. If you wanted to do it for a seven thirty timeframe, it's just an option.
It's up to the board.
I think we could just do it first, get it done.
Okay.
And I, I would not perceive, as we've had other public hearings, that there wouldn't be any issues with what's going on.
Well, I, for doing the public hearing, I will present an overview of it, anybody that's a home, so it's recorded, all of that. Obviously, anyone in attendance.
Yep.
Who seconded that? Thank you, Mr. Eddie. You ready for the vote?
Yeah.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Ms. Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Papa Christus?
Aye.
And Mr. Moran?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Do you have anything else?
Other than you're gonna get a bill for the housing work for your next NEPRA manifest? That's all I have.
One hundred percent covered out of the grant.
It's completely covered out of a grant.
Perfect.
Okay. So it doesn't go on the NEPRA, it goes on-
Oh, sorry.
When the bill comes in, I'll put it together and get it to you.
Does anybody have anything else?
I, I just got something real quick. Last week, I went to the Rockingham County Transportation Advisory Committee meeting, which was actually pretty good. I was surprised how many people were there, to be honest with you.
They're well attended. We serve good pizza, too.
It was late.
It wasn't? Oh.
The pizza was late?
Yeah, but that's okay. No, it, but as far as, I just had a quick question. Obviously, I came into the process at the very end, and I guess all the, has Newton itself applied for any of those funds? Do we know of that?
So Newton has always had a couple of projects. Rose Corner is one of the ongoing Newton projects. So there have been spots in the past, I will say, for transportation improvement. If there are things that you have that you think should start to get on the list, even if it's a rough idea, you don't have any cost, at least start to work on, through the process of getting it on the long-range transportation, because it, it's called long-range for a reason. It takes a long time.
So right now, it looks like June fifth is the end of this cycle?
I believe that's correct. It might be off of the week or so.
Right, and then the last Thursday of June, they're gonna vote, do, do vote on the projects and stuff.
Yep, we vote to prioritize.
And according to, and I'm drawing a blank with the gentleman's name for Rose Corner that's in charge, I called him up, they're supposed to be putting it out to bid for next month or July, hopefully, so that they should know by the fall who is gonna be awarded the contract, and they're hoping to start the work next year. But of course, they won't know until they find out who got awarded the bid and what their schedule is to, at what timeframe of next year that they'd be ready to start that project over at Rose Corner.
That's a so-vavic project. It has gone through?
Yeah, that project is in the ten-year plan as funding that.
It's somewhere in the ten-year plan.
But I will say, it was applied for at least ten years ago, possibly a little longer than that.
Right.
Mr. Eddie?
I believe it was around two thousand.
They thought about a rotary, but their concern, when they thought about the rotary, were the people that were coming southbound on one oh eight later in the afternoon because of the influx of people coming back to town or cutting through town, would be flowing through that rotary, and it would alleviate the other cars from being able to get in and navigate it. So what they're going to do is, it's gonna become a four-way stop sign. They're gonna get rid of those mediums that are there, and they're gonna be straight on four ways, and they'll widen certain corners to, for tractor trailers and whatnot, to be able to make the appropriate turns.
I'm hoping that that helps with the speeding issue down one oh eight, too.
That was a big thing that they were talking about, is trying to, because- Trying to, because of funding. There's, there's a hundred or so projects that are, I think they said beyond the 10-year plan. They're waiting, are waiting to get on the 10-year plan.
Yeah, those are things in our long range.
And there's like $8 million.
There is not adequate funding for everything.
Oh God, it's not even close. And then, and plus the sad part is, is we're dealing with, obviously we're a little piece of Rockingham County and when you're dealing with Portsmouth and 101 and all those other things that are thrown into it, it's going to be, uh, it's going to be tough.
Yes, I will say generally like intersection improvements don't happen until there are enough deaths or fatalities or major injuries.
Sad thing to say, but that, that was what, that's what's going to end up having to happen. Safety is the biggest thing that we need to do to push to get, I mean, look at these intersections around here. They're all from, you know, the 1700s when there was a little goat path and.
I will say that if a town has a concern about a specific intersection, being very vocal and calling your state representatives, calling Department of Transportation, interacting with the RPC, so you just being on the committee is a good start. Be a squeaky wheel. It might not happen in the next five years, but maybe it'll happen in the next 10 rather than 20 or 30 years out.
Right, you know, you look at the next intersection down from Rose Corner where it zips around the corner there for New Boston Road. That, that's a, I'm surprised nobody's gotten.
I've almost got a T-bone there a couple times.
There's been a couple of accidents there. According to our road agent, Mike Povero, when new construction is done, some of these intersections like you're talking about, they'll, they come in so that you need to turn your head to look over to see if traffic's coming. If there is new construction done at those type of intersections, those are supposed to be alleviated now. And they're supposed to be a straight-on 90-degree right or left turn. No more, no more angles entering or exiting.
And what you were just saying before about four-way stop signs or three-way stop signs and stuff like that, they're leaning to even, to get it. They're, the whole mentality of DOT was always to keep everybody flowing, keep the traffic flowing.
Yep.
Now it's like, the safe, again, you just have to push the safety thing, I think, from what I got out of it. The other day, you know, just, that's our only hope to try and, and get, the other thing that they talked about, it's 108, it's a perfect road. How speed limits jump all the time. It's 35 down here, it goes up to 40 over here, it goes back to 35 down there. They don't, that's not a good thing either, they were saying.
Yeah, traffic calming is generally a good thing. It improves safety.
Bike, bike issues, that's a, that's a huge, huge thing. Pedestrian, pedestrian traffic.
That'd scare me.
And, you know, where nobody can, you don't want to be walking your kid or anybody on 108.
Right.
And, um, and the bicycles are already, they were just on my way down here. There was a flock of them going through town. And, and there's not, there's, the white line is six inches off the edge of pavement.
There are ways that more rural towns can accommodate bike and pedestrian without necessarily.
Right.
Having sidewalks and huge bike lanes, having bigger shoulders.
So like what you were just saying, how to squawk and complain about the whole safety thing? That's, I think, what needs to happen because then you've got Portsmouth throwing these projects out there for sound walls. Because people are complaining because of the noise. And I've worked for DOT for 15 years and I know what sound walls are all about and I know how they, they, psychologically you think it's a fine, they just, it's a sound wall. They don't work. So anyway, but that's where money is, seems like it's getting sucked into that where.
There are definitely pots of money that are different from the sound wall money.
Right.
You know, safety, bike ped things, um, honestly, design standards and the regulations that we talk about all the time. If you want to work on your road safety infrastructure, that's something that we can look into. Grants to sort of accommodate, it would be applicable to new road design, but it still can improve things.
So it works with getting, like Rose Corner, obviously, there's a design to it of some sort.
Yes.
Then it's been submitted and all that.
Yep.
So if you go to the next intersection down New Boston Road, you would have to get, does, how does it work?
So that's because it's a state road, um, the state DOT has to be involved in it. On local roads, you guys actually have the say over it in the select board.
Right.
And Mike has done, I'm sorry, they have done some reconstruction. The Chase and Pond Street, they fixed that intersection.
Right.
Whittier and Highland is also really wacky.
Yeah.
It's relatively inexpensive fix to help calm traffic. I know people probably have all their own opinions on how to fix it, but.
I will say ensuring you have an adequate road budget is a big part of that, though.
Right, because Whittier and Highland is just as bad as Rose Corner because of the way the people come up and shoot straight across. When Highland comes, it may actually merge.
And, but that's on 100% our jurisdiction, even though I think, I'm going to. One is plowed by the state.
Really?
Highland's a state road.
It's maintained?
Maintained by the state.
Yep.
Interesting.
Even though there's.
Do we, is there something that we can get a document that says what roads are ours and what roads are the state's?
Oh, absolutely. 100%. I can provide that for you.
That, that's a good start.
I was just going by memory.
I think we own it, but I think the state maintains it for access from the salt shithole to 108. That's a question for Mike.
There, there might be a line sometimes in some towns on roads like that. It's up to a point and then it changes.
But I'm like 95% sure.
I'll bring a map for our next meeting.
Like a perfect example is from the Haverhill Plastile Line on 108 to the Plastile Newton Line. You know, that got reconstructed, all the drainage, infrastructure, safety, blah, blah, blah. Six-foot, eight-foot shoulders, people can ride. Then you get to Newton and.
Yep.
Nothing.
You can tell where the jurisdiction changes in the money.
Big time.
Yep.
Also tell where the population centers are.
Yeah.
It's, it's also tough, too, because that's Section 108. It's a causeway. There's a lot of wetland right there, too, so.
Well, I, I will say based on this discussion, if working on some transportation stuff, even if it's just general discussion and some prioritization, we can, we can always do a master plan chapter that gives the list of the roads and everything like that. It can pull in some of these discussions. We can do that under RPC's existing funds if that's something you guys want to work on for next year.
Yeah, that's the thing that I kind of really didn't get is what's the timeframe to submit? And again, it was, one thing about their meetings, they're from 12 to 2, and at 2 o'clock, they close up and gone.
I'll, I'll find out the exact dates. It is coming up for submitting projects. We do the same process every year, however.
And all this stuff, right, that, that June 5th date ends this year, and then he talked about the dates, getting it into September, October, where it goes to DOT and all that stuff.
Then we have to have our GAC hearings.
Right, then they take the, you know, then come, it starts back up again in January.
Yep.
Where they kind of feed the process, I guess.
It's a wheel.
Yeah.
It's government at its finest.
It also helps that we now have somebody on the deck.
It absolutely helps.
Yeah, they made sure they were asking who I was and everything else.
Your, um, backup, if you will, still needs to get sworn in.
My backup? Oh.
You.
Dennis.
If somebody invites me to the meetings, I will attend.
They, they, there was, there was a half, there was probably a half a dozen, maybe four people that zoomed in. But there had to have been 15 people there.
I'm sure you're on the list.
Food.
Oh, I, I gave Annette Dennis's information, contact information.
Oh, nobody sent me anything.
I'll double check.
She probably hasn't sent it to you yet because I didn't have a copy of your, um, signed appointment. I sent Annette, who is the office manager for the Rockingham Planning Commission. Mr. Papa Christus, mine and Mr. Sylvia's appointments, because they were completed. I sent your information as well, however, I didn't have a document.
I don't know if MJ made a copy.
You need to see Ms. McCullough downstairs.
I mean, it's.
I, I saw her and I signed it, but I don't know if she, um.
She's usually very good at getting them.
You know, I mean, it's not, it's, it's the last Thursday of the month from 12 to 2, so, I mean, I'm, I'm retired. I double around and do things so I can kind of make it go, but I mean, it's going to be.
Well, I will say you are both welcome to attend.
Easiest thing to do for somebody.
We'll just order more pizza.
Have it their own time.
Have I talked about the pizza?
I'm sorry?
Have I talked about the pizza?
Listen, if you've got some fried mushrooms, I'll be there.
They have a good vegan pizza.
Ooh.
The state guys were all over it.
And where are the meetings at?
Uh, the planning commission's office in Exeter.
Right in downtown Exeter.
In Exeter.
You can say hi to me.
First person I saw. But that's pretty much, it's a start. I was just wondering, I, the, which makes sense, you know, so obviously this year is already taken care of and I wasn't sure what was there, but, and then, like you said, now they're going to start shifting the 10-year plan around and the jobs and.
Uh, we take all of the submittals we get, we add, they get added into the mix, but then we have to prioritize them because of the.
Right.
Funding issue and there's a bunch of criteria for doing that. Um, and then we always put forth all of the projects, but with that scoring and then it goes into the state.
And they adjusted that scoring.
Yeah. So I mean, um, the Hampton Seabrook Bridge reconstruction has been high priority for a long time because of the number of people that go over at the safety issues.
Sure.
You know, Rose Corner, while I know it's a concern, you're dealing with a lot less people.
Right.
Well, the gentleman's name is actually Tim. I can't remember his last name, but his first name is Tim. And he did say that it is a priority for him to get that project done.
Yeah, yep.
So talking about the rotary in Portsmouth, the big one, that was.
Yeah, the root one.
And there isn't enough, I guess, no, the funding's not there. But I guess they had enough funding to do engineering and stuff like that, so something like that will, that job will kill the whole budget.
Very easily, yes.
Yeah, oh, yeah, they've done, I'm not sure, I didn't quite get into what.
But it's good that you're going because like Jen has said before, that being there, you're aware and so many other communities that don't have people going there won't know when those grants become available so that we would be able to jump right in and get on it for anything we wanted to do.
I will say you even giving an update that you went to the meeting and you talked about stuff, you are an A-plus tech member.
I'm doomed. Actually, the signup thing was for five years, too. I don't know how that happened, but.
That's because you're really good.
I'm still around in five years.
I actually, I put them in with staggered completion dates. I don't know how that got messed up.
You've got like 10 years.
That caught his attention. Mr. Chairman, would you like to adjourn the meeting?
Yes, please.